Okay, this one, I think our own, I lost Kath here. I think Kath's gonna be somewhat involved in this also, but this is a presentation on the Michigan After School Partnership. And it's, board members have requested this. We've asked our 21st Century Community Learning Centers team that's here in the department and our friends at the Michigan After School Partnership to provide an update on our initiatives here in Michigan. And that's to ensure that all students have these opportunities to extend their learning. I don't know about you, but I'm an example of someone. It was probably good that I was busy after school and some appropriate after-school activities. And I think this is an unsung, an unsung part of our system that really helps a lot of kids in their learning as well as in their growth. So this is a great opportunity today, and I'll ask Sally to introduce everyone in a moment, but I'm gonna turn it over to Sally.
Yeah, so, thank you. We're pleased to be giving you this update on what we're doing with out-of-school programs, some of which are in the summer and some of which are after school. But as Mike mentioned, as we've become more and more focused on the career and college readiness for all of our people, we need to make sure that the learning gaps don't occur. And part of the way to prevent them from happening is to make sure that they've got school day programs that are obviously relevant, but also that they've got after-school and summertime programs that will prevent them from learning what they've learned during the school year. So, we're gonna give you an update about a couple of programs. Lindy Bush, who is our Director of our Early Childhood and Family Services Program, is going to kick it off. And then Pat Hennessy, who is our 21st Century Community Learning Centers Director, will share what's going on with the 21st Century. And then Mary Sutton, who's with the Michigan Association of United Ways, will go after, will talk about the after-school programs. So, Lindy?
Thank you, Sally. And thank you all for this opportunity. It is welcomed, and we are glad to update you on what we're doing. Sometimes you don't hear about it enough. So, you know, I think we are all focused on the career and college-ready agenda. We want our kids in Michigan to have a fair chance to succeed in the country, to compete in the rest of the world. And to do that, we need a number of things. You usually hear me talking about early childhood and the importance of children being ready, eager, healthy when they start school. You hear a lot about excellent school-day experiences, but the research is pretty clear that we need to keep kids safe, as Mike just said, and engaged before and after the school day in productive kinds of activities. And particularly, there's a lot of research about not just preventing a loss during the summer, but the opportunities that some kids have to really accelerate their learning during the summer, and other kids fall behind. And that makes the gap look bigger, but it's not really because of the school programs. But because we test once a year, it looks like it's just the schools. So, within the department, we have a number of things going on. First of all, we have the standards for out-of-school time programs to make sure that those programs are really in line with all of our goals and standards and expectations for kids during the school day. You've approved those standards for those programs. They are online, and we put the link for you. We also have a large 42 million, what, $43 million federal after-school program called 21st Century Community Learning Centers. Pat's gonna update you on what we've been doing structurally and what our results are. There are other extended learning opportunities available that local, mostly districts, but other programs have that are funded through multiple funding streams, including childcare and all kinds of places. And then we have statewide partnerships where we're trying to work together to coordinate this whole system. And Mary Sutton's gonna talk about the after-school partnership that we originally started with a grant within the department, always knowing that it didn't belong here, but it was a good way to start it. So she's gonna talk about that, too. So I'm gonna turn this over to Pat to get started on the 21st Century Community Learning Centers and what we're doing with those.
Thank you, Lindy. First of all, I'm a consultant. (laughing) Anyway. The 21st Century Community Learning Center is funded, is authorized through the title for Part B, No Child Left Behind Act, part of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. And the purpose of the 21st Century, of this program, is to create community learning centers with three goals in mind: academic enrichment through experiences, including hands-on active learning in the out-of-school time offerings, focusing on core academic areas, following standards, especially in math and in reading at this point. We offer, that's part one. We also offer several enrichment activities, developing life skills in these students, supporting what's going on in the school day, but taking it a step further because we do have the time to do that, such as drug and alcohol abuse, again, life skills, preparing for career. The other part is offering services to families of students that attend the program, such as literacy, working on educational opportunities, helping them maybe get a GED. We have several partners. Of course, the Michigan Department of Education. We follow the goal and priorities established, approved by the Board of Education in all of our programs. That's the foundation. Michigan State University is another one of our partners, and they provide the evaluation of our programs. Lindy had enough foresight to see that evaluation is crucial to any program that's implemented, and it has been part of our program from the very beginning. They do an excellent job of collecting data from each program and use that for reports to the federal government, to us, and then, most importantly, to the programs, to the sites, helping them work on developing goals to further improve their programs. The Wykarts, David P. Wykert Center for Youth Program Quality is another of our partners. They provide, all of our programs are required to use the youth program quality assessment each year. It's a self-assessment tool that helps them focus on their specific needs. They rate themselves. That's something that has improved over the years, and they're doing a much better job of that, actually focusing on areas they need to improve on. The other thing the Wykert Center provides for us is the technical assistance and coaching support system, which provide coaches for our program as well, who provide trainings across the state, and also work with individual grants that may need a little bit of extra help to bring them up to the quality that is expected of all of our programs. You'll be here, the other partner is MAST, Michigan After School Partnership, and Mary will be talking about that in a few minutes. This summer, we are also working with the Children's Trust Fund. We were fortunate enough, through the help of several people, in order to get this $3 million grant to expand our summer programs across the state. There was a competitive, there was a competition in order to receive this grant. Twenty-nine grants were awarded, and money was given to each site up to a limit of $45,000 per site, which, as you can imagine, was a great benefit to our programs. They expanded things, either the length of the program, held it for more weeks during the summer, expanded it to extra students, or offered, expanded the programs they were offering. So, in going around visiting the programs this summer, it's incredible to see some of the things they're doing. So it's been a great benefit. Thank you. The next part I'll talk about very briefly are the numbers. As Lindy mentioned, it's actually $43.5 million we received for the 2010-11 school year. Ninety grants are currently being funded. And the grants are awarded to 47 different organizations, from local schools to community agencies, intermediate school districts, charter schools, 16 community-based organizations run programs, one university. The programs are spread throughout the state from the very top of the U.P. down to the further, down to the far southeast corner. So, all over the state, 23 different counties. A big part of the success of our program is our partnership with different community organizations. Currently, there are 840 different community organizations involved in our programs that provide over $4 million to help with the programs and the ones they're involved in. So it's a great benefit, and it's a crucial part of what we do. They really are community centers. I'm getting to that. Currently, there are 43,000 students involved in after-school programs. There are, of the 90 grants, there are 330 sites that I talked about, schools, community organizations, et cetera. This is how the students we serve. You can see that data. All of the information I'm presenting is available on the 21st Century website, which was on the title page of this part. Please feel free to go to that, explore further what is going on in our programs. Originally, in the first grants that were awarded, it was a pretty much 50-50 split between pre-K, between the elementary and the middle schools. There was one high school in the beginning. Now it's spread out. We still have the majority in the elementary schools, but the number of middle schools and high schools that are participating has increased greatly. The ethnicity, you can see. Again, this information is available on our website, also at MSU's. Thanks, Pat. The impact that we're having. Let me make sure about that. All of the impact is available because of MSU's evaluations. As I said, they provide the data to the federal government, to the state, and to us. But what we're seeing are things, the at-risk students that we serve participate in academic activities in the program, they get homework help, there's tutoring, there's enrichment activities. Students and parents improve, or report improvement in performance and commitment to school. They belong to the after-school program. If they're involved in that, they are more likely, the attendance increases because they enjoy what they're doing after school. So they're watching their behavior during school so that they can participate after school. That's been a very positive result. Majority of academically at-risk students who attend program regularly, and what we consider regularly is 30 or more days during the school year, that doesn't sound like a lot, but it really makes an impact on their achievement. There's been shown to be improvement in reading grades in 37% of students, and improvement in math grades in 38% of the students that attend after-school programs. MSU collects data on academically at-risk students and the classroom performance, and 63% have improved in getting homework in on time, improved in completing homework satisfactorily, not just turning it in, and improved in classroom participation. There is a question? Do we wanna wait with questions? If you don't mind, can we get through both presentations, and we'll come back?
Well, I was just curious as to where the source of these percentages. Did they do a compare homework improvement of kids who didn't attend any of these programs versus those who did? Or is it simply that all kids?
It's just looking in the student, at the students that participate in after-school programs.
Okay.
Forty-three percent of those students.
Okay, so, for example, I imagine 60% of those students grew an inch or so over the year, and we could attribute that to the summer program as well.
To, to.
Okay, I just, all right, I just wanna-
Correct. Correct. It's very hard to pin it down to one, but that's-
Okay, that's, I just wanted to know how, how hard these figures are you're throwing out. Okay.
Thanks, Pat. Okay. And we continue to work on quality all the time, every year. And that's what we're looking for, is helping to improve the quality that's offered to these students so that they are college and career-ready. So, thank you.
Thanks. Good morning. As I was introduced, I'm the Executive Director of the Michigan After School Partnership. And as such, I represent, represent a wide diverse range of stakeholders across the state who are really invested in helping to support our students achieve success academically and to be college and career-ready. The Michigan After School Partnership was formed in 2004. It evolved out of a statewide task force that really was charged with taking a look at what supports currently exist in the state to support students. From that, the Michigan Department of Education and the Department of Human Services, which at that time was the FIA, Family Independence Agency, co-chaired the effort to take a look and build a strategic action plan around what we could do to kind of raise the bar and what we were doing to help support students in the state. So the partnership was formed in 2005, and as Dr. Bush mentioned, we were housed here in the Department of Ed. Since that time, the scope of involvement of other state agencies has grown to include the Department of Energy, Labor, and Economic Growth, at one time, History Arts and Libraries, the Department of Community Health. So all of the different state agencies that have vested interest in helping to support students and families really became engaged in the work of the partnership to help break down barriers and silos and begin working together to form these critical supports for kids. The work of the partnership has been funded since the beginning from the C.S. Mott Foundation, who has really been a leader across the country in engaging communities in education processes and is really vested in this work. The foundation supports the work not only here in Michigan, but in 38 other states as well. The Robert Wood Johnson Foundation also supported the work of the partnership in looking at how children's health and nutrition have a critical impact on their ability to come to school ready and willing to learn. In 2007, the partnership evolved out of its home at the Department of Ed and moved to the Michigan Association of United Ways, which was one of the critical partners in the partnership. So support from a number of agencies and organizations over the years has really complemented the support of the Department of Ed. The NOS Foundation this past year has also become one of our critical partners and is helping to support and fund the work that we're doing in building capacity around science, technology, engineering, and math opportunities for kids. So the goals of the partnership, again, are to help improve student achievement, increase graduation rates, address issues of equity, help keep kids safe, healthy, and in school, ready to learn, and ready to succeed. We have a state-level focus on system-building. Again, our work to help break down barriers, strengthen the connection between out-of-school and the school day, help develop and support innovative strategies to engage young people outside of the classroom, and to have an impact on their development. After-school, again, focuses on the whole child, their safety, their health, their engagement, their support, and to make sure that they're challenged and that they have appropriate goals for their future. Our partners on a statewide agency level go beyond state agencies to include some of our statewide organizations, the Michigan Municipal League, the Association of School Boards, Michigan's Children, other advocacy organizations, the Elementary and Secondary Principals Associations, cities and counties across the state, community-based organizations, YMCA's, Junior Achievement, Boys and Girls Clubs. And again, with a focus on building quality, building an infrastructure of support, creating those critical connections and links to the school day. We have a number of national partners through the Mott Foundation as well, the chief state school officers who've, who produce resources for us and for state school boards across the country, the National Governors Association, who's supported funding here in Michigan, the hosting of a mayoral summit on expanded learning opportunities. We were able to meet with mayors across the state to reach out to them, to get them to become acutely aware of the opportunities that they have from their boli pulpit to increase awareness about expanded learning opportunities and the connection between economic development and the growth of cities. So we're very excited about the work that's, that the partnership is doing. We've developed a credentialing process, our focus on quality, because we know that not only do we need kids in programs, but the programs need to be of high quality to be effective and to be producing the kinds of outcomes that Pat mentioned. And while it's really exciting that 21st Century has the number of grants that they do, it's also important to recognize the fact that over 500 million kids in the state of Michigan go home every day unsupported and without programs. So we're really looking for ways that we can work with private foundations and access other federal funding streams to build the opportunities and increase access for kids across the state of Michigan. So we are basically thankful for the opportunity to continue to work not only with Lindy's office here in the department, but we work with the Office of School Improvement, the Math and Science Center Consultants, the Health and Nutrition Department within the department. And we look forward to engaging further with the state board and with the department and offering support from all of the critical agencies within our network to do what we can. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Sally and everyone. And we're privileged with, since you color-coordinated today, your dress.
Yes.
Mary, I think, the privilege of the first question to Kathy Strauss.
Well, I want to thank you for bringing this presentation to the board. I think it's really important for all of us to know that we've been involved in these activities, and the department is supporting it and, and working with the Michigan Association, the school partnerships. So, as many of you know, I think, I promoted the idea of full-day, full-service schools when I first became President of the Board, 12, 13 years ago now, 14 years ago. This is the closest we've come to the idea of full-day, full-service schools. So, I still think that's a good idea, but I'm glad to have these programs going. And the more, you read articles in the paper every day about children losing their knowledge over the summer and having to spend the first month of the fall season, fall school season, reviewing everything and bringing them back up to snuff. So having programs in the summer where they can actually learn something and retain their knowledge and enhance their knowledge is really important. And now with the partnership with CCSSO, working on the core curriculum, that brings in the administrators, which is really important. And the programs are very exciting, and the ones that I've heard about and seen are really very productive, and I think it helps the children a lot. First of all, the elementary school children, but then the middle school children, who tend to get into trouble when they're out of school frequently, and we end up with kids in correction institutions, or on probation, or on tethers. I mean, I've seen kids in schools, they've shown me their tethers because I didn't know what one looked like, and that's pretty scary. So it's really important that we provide services, it seems to me, for keeping the kids safe, and not only safe, but enhancing their education opportunities and promoting that. That's what we're all here for. So, thank you very much for the programs and what you're doing. And the other thing that impressed me, one of the other things that impressed me was the partnership with the League of Cities and the mayors. Mayors have gotten really into, into this, and a lot of cities, Grand Rapids particularly, I know in Detroit they did, but Grand Rapids has great programs going with the, through the mayor's office. And I think the fact that we've got schools working with the mayors is a good thing just in general, because the schools, the cities don't thrive if the schools aren't good in their cities, and the schools do better if the mayors are supportive, even though it's a separate unit of government. So that's a big step in the right direction, I think. So I think it's really very important, and I'm very glad to have all of us exposed to these activities.
Thanks, Pam. Eileen and Richard.
It's a very bad thing that the state board of ed members now have computers at their place, because, of course, as soon as I saw the, I think it's the Wykert Foundation-
Yes.
I wanted to know what they did. And first, I do want to say, I'm thrilled to have this presentation and to see the quality of the assessment that's going on for the programs. It's very hard to do this, and I appreciate that you put it in place at the beginning. But the Wykert Foundation has a link to a, something about, a speech by a woman who is running something called Ready by '21. Is that, you're familiar with it? And she says that, "Who fills the rest of the white space for all the time that kids aren't in school, which is only about a third of their lives?" And it says, "The good news is that many do, first and foremost, families, but also nonprofit service providers, civic and faith-based organizations, health and social service organizations, businesses, libraries, parks and rec departments, colleges and universities, early childhood educators, and family care providers." The bad news is that most communities have very little idea of the overall levels of supports provided by these disparate leaders, or of the quality of what is being provided. And then it goes on to say, "It's not enough to be taking care of kids after school and enriching what's going on in school." Unfortunately, schools aren't doing a very good job right now on their own, and parents aren't producing kids who can work and go to college and become successful citizens." So one of the questions that I bring up as a policymaker is, just as we're doing a pre-K, a birth through, pre-birth through pre-K, meshing of programs and trying to figure out what works for kids, is there anything on the horizon nationally yet from CCSSO or any other provider to help communities figure out which of their programs actually lead to the kind of outcomes, not just better achievement in school, but actual employability or readiness for college and success there?
You know, that's a really good question. And the after-school field, the out-of-school time field, is a little behind the early childhood field and the systemic efforts. These partnerships, these statewide networks and partnerships are how far we've, excuse me, how far we've gotten. And some of the communities, and we had three or four that we've spotlighted, have really worked together through their mayor's offices on extensive community-wide networks. That's kind of the beginning, but we're not quite as far ahead. We're still working on some of the assessment tools. That's what, we've used some of our discretionary 21st Century money to develop some of those tools, to start to get there. But that's why we'd be sending people to national conferences to figure it out. Would you say we're not quite as far?
You know, we're definitely not quite as far, but we are, we're getting there. And one of the goals of the statewide systems-building work is to take that structure that we're doing at a state level and take it down to the local level. And as Kathleen mentioned, Grand Rapids is a perfect example of that. The city of Grand Rapids has an ELO network, an expanded learning opportunity network. And what it's done is brought to a large community table, all of those players, the schools, the faith-based, the community-based organizations, and said, "Let's not just keep doing what we do. Let's do it together. Let's coordinate it. Let's make it purposeful, and let's make it quality." They've, they've done an adaptation of the state standards that this board has adopted on a local level. All the members of their community that offer after-school programs make a commitment to adhere to that quality. They, they do some assessments. They've done some really fantastic work where they've taken a city map and overlaid juvenile justice reports of juvenile crime, and then taken a look at where there's programs and where there's gaps, and as a community made a decision, who was gonna step up to the plate and, and start a program here? program here because this is where we need it. And then begin to look at the data to make sure that it's been impactful, that it's had an impact by looking at the crime rates again in a few years and seeing that it has made a difference. So that's a good example and we're taking some of the lessons learned from that, sharing it with other communities who are wanting to do the same kind of thing. Mayor Hartwell has been instrumental in using his voice to other mayors across the state to bring attention to it as a tool for workforce and economic development, quite frankly. And that's a hook that a lot of mayors and city leaders can relate to.
Well, I'd like to propose that every meeting I try to say exactly what I think should be on our website for people to access. And here's another one. I would love to have Mayor Hartwell do a summary and show, that could be on our website for best practices for after-school programs to show what it takes to plan systemically for a community. It could be 10 minutes and it would be informative to anybody who was able to access our information besides yours.
Good idea. We'll follow up with that. Great. Richard and John?
I just wanted to ask, oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Do you have any recommendations? I think that's a very good suggestion that Eileen made. Any suggestions or recommendations to the board to do anything in addition to what we're doing or further activities?
There are a number of things as the year goes on. In October, there's a national event, Lights On After School, where we have an opportunity to really spotlight innovative and strategic programs. State boards across the, school boards across the state do resolutions. The governor has done a Lights On resolution. A State Board of Education resolution. Raising attention to those kinds of events and resources within local communities is a great idea. We are following some revisions to some national standards of quality. We're going to be working, trying to develop STEM curriculum standards. So potentially, we will have recommendations to come back to the state board that maybe can be included in the state standards. So those kinds of things as we move forward are definitely things we can pass on as asked.
Richard, please.
And John?
Okay. I hate to rain on the parade, but this presentation reminds me a lot of my experience with DARE, which pulled together community resources, got parents involved, mayors got to grant stand and coordinate things, police got to talk to cheering groups of children, grant money flowed. The only problem is that after all of this involvement, DARE programs have shown to have no impact on kids' drug use. And that's the concern that I bring towards our, some of the things that you shared here. Not that I doubt the possibility of good results, but I would like to see more evidence as to what is working. And I noticed just from some of the figures that you have here, you've got 43 and a half million federal funds in one year. Apparently affected 43,000 students, so each kid got a grant of over $1,000 for 30 days of participation on average.
That's not an average. That's the minimum you need for effectiveness. We have kids who've gone every day during the school year and the summer. We don't collect data on them unless, we don't report data unless they've come at least 30 days because we know it's not effective.
Okay, so the 43,000 kids are those who have attended 30 days or more?
Yes.
Okay, that's helpful.
There are more kids, but we don't collect data. Less than 30 days.
No data.
As with the DARE program, it's not enough to do anything.
No, no. And you look at the number of people that actually get the 21st Century grant money are half, not even half, of who applies for it. The need is so great that this federal program can't begin to cover it. It needs to be supported by communities, by mayors.
Well, now unpack that for me. You say the need is so great.
And we're looking at only-
Who defines the need? What need are we talking about?
We're looking at high, underperforming schools. Pardon?
The federal requirement is we can only serve low-performing schools in low-income neighborhoods.
Right. Where students are not achieving.
Now, in the last, next to last panel, the statement was made, there were 500, was it 500 million kids that were unsupported?
In the state of Michigan, a half a million children do not have a place to go after school. They go home unsupported. None of them go home to empty homes.
And are-
Not even a parent is there when they come home from school. And that data, I can send you the research. That was an after-school alliance study that was done in 2009. So those are 2009 numbers. And we know that we've lost funding for a number of programs since that research was done.
And this is a need for, this is a need for after-school programs as opposed to a need for parental involvement?
Parental involvement would be great, but you look at what's possible today with the number of working parents who have to work. I mean, they don't have a choice.
Unpack that for me. Parents who have to work?
If they're lucky enough to have a job.
Okay.
In order to support a standard of living that's barely-
What is that standard of living?
Just bare necessities, especially looking at the schools that we support.
Okay. And I guess that's one of my concerns here. There's a lot of assumptions that are undefined and I think it would be helpful to be more specific.
Can I recommend that you go to, there's a link on our website to the MSU research and briefs that they provide for us that will give you very specific detail. They do an annual report that's sent to the federal government. The link to the MSU is on one of the slides.
Why don't we send that directly to-
Okay, it's on PowerPoint there.
Okay, I'm just saying, let's send it directly to the board so you can just click on.
We can also include a number of other federal research evidence-based studies that will show you.
Okay, so we'll put a couple of those together. Yes, yes. And be aware that they are all on our, on the 21st Century website. There are links to- Okay, we'll send those together. Yes, and send them to you.
Those are getting to some of my questions. I mean, Richard's caution is well-intentioned. I think we need to make sure and keep demonstrating that quality after school does deliver meaningfully for academic improvement and achievement and outcomes for these kids. I was assuming those things based on the data to be true, you know, really interested. How many, with the same numbers that Richard was reviewing, how many kids who aren't succeeding academically don't have quality after school? I mean, how many are we able to involve in a quality after-school program? What proportion of the kids in Michigan?
We'd have to do some work to figure that out because it's always harder. You know who participates. You don't know who qualifies, who didn't show up.
And is most, I'm sorry?
I'm just to follow John's. Do you have a, kind of a, just a general sense? We won't hold you to it exactly, but-
Is it 1%? 40%?
Of the half a million, how many are poor?
Pre-reduced launch indicators for the schools that you serve?
Yeah, I could take a guess, but I won't, but I will find that out and include that.
The point being, are we, and is most of the money that we get to spend on this, is it mostly federal 21st Century? And has that been steady or has it been declining or?
It's been steadily increasing until this next year.
At risk right now?
There is going to be a reduction, there has been a reduction.
And I'm always eager and interested, and I think Eileen's suggestion is a good one, places like Grand Rapids and others to get organized around this, you know. And can we scale up with public-private resources at the local level?
And that's, one of the large numbers of partners that MASP is trying to bring to the table is business, is the private funding community. The United Way system in cities all across the state funds youth development and after-school programs. Community foundations do as well. So they're part of our partners in trying to raise sustainable funding. We did just receive funding for a Vista volunteer this year who's going to go around to programs, after-school programs across the state and help them develop sustainability plans, help them engage businesses in the local communities, engage United Ways and private funding sources to build more resources in a sustainable way to support the programs.
Well, thank you for your work advancing and I just think we need to keep advocating for investing resources in a public-private and whatever way we can to make sure kids that can benefit from this have access to it as an important investment. Mayor Hartwell, they're good at making videos in Grand Rapids.
They probably have it written on the shelf. We'll hook it up.
We're grateful of using public and private and foundation resources to multiply and leverage the work that's done.
Thank you, guys. Very interesting and very thoughtful. I also want to say, I mean, I do appreciate the different views the board has. I think it's helpful to probe and to get sharp our thinking on issues and I think it's good to have some diversity of thought, really. I'm going to ask Sally to stay and I think Flora is going to join us and Steve, I think, is also joining us.
Let them get set up for a second.
I see a lot of our friends from the schools of Ed and I appreciate their interest in being here today. And by the way, we want to highlight some of the real improvements that have come along and I think it's really very much to their credit. And so in, geez, I'm saying so, I'm Joseph too much. So in June of 2006, the State Board of Ed approved criteria, as you know, for teacher prep institutions' performance scores. And that's the one I mentioned earlier. We might, we started thinking a little bit yesterday about the possibility of mending those a bit and that's, that would be for a future time that we'd bring something to you. Staff in the Office of Professional Preparation Services has gathered the necessary data and applied the criteria that you proved and producing this report. This report, as Flora indicated earlier today, is going to also be given to the U.S. Department of Ed to comply with the Higher Education Act. And as I said, we're also happy to see a good amount of the improvement that this will represent, especially in a few institutions. So Sally.
So this is the annual performance scores and the report that you received. So for those of you that are seasoned board members, this is something you've seen for a number of years. And for the new board members, we'll walk you through with what the scores are and how they're, on how they're determined. So with me at the table is Dr. Flora Jenkins, who's the Director of the Office of Professional Preparation Services, as well as Steve Stenjek, who is a consultant with our Higher Education Unit. So Flora?
Okay, thank you. And as Sally and Mike have indicated, this is what we do each year in terms of putting in place accountability for our teacher preparation institutions. And it's one part of it. And there are other things that go into the review of an institution, looking at whether or not they're meeting state standards. And Steve works with this. He works with the technician who pulls together a lot of data to get this report done. We also give our institutions an opportunity to take a look at the data that we've used to see whether or not they have any questions about it or things that they need clarified. Is it correct? Did they do everything they needed to do to get us the correct information? And if you take a look at page two of your item, you'll see some of the summaries that we've done in terms of the institutions. They're rated as either high, as high performing, I mean, what is it, exemplary, satisfactory, and then we have the at-risk and the low-performing. And those are the two categories that we really pay a lot of attention to. If you look at page two, you'll see that Mary Grove has moved from low-performing to satisfactory. We're very happy about that. We have worked with those institutions that were identified as at-risk or low-performing to provide technical assistance to have them go through a complete self-assessment of their programs. Take a look at the kinds of things that they're doing with the program, how they're recruiting their teacher preparation candidates, what their admissions criteria are. You know, some institutions may have had an open admissions policy which allowed people to come into the teacher prep program without really having as good of academic preparation that they needed for that. So we've asked them to look at that. Some of these decisions were very tough decisions for institutions to make, but if they're going to improve, these are the things that they have to do. It's also providing academic support to those students once they're in your program. What can you do to make sure that they're really prepared to go out and be good teachers? So Mary Grove has moved, they've been removed from the corrective action because they're now considered satisfactory. We have a couple of institutions that moved from satisfactory to exemplary, such as Albion College and Hillsdale College. We had some that moved from exemplary to satisfactory. Ferris State, University of Michigan-Slynt and Western Michigan University. And some of this may be attributable to some of our cut scores that we had increased in the MTTC. So we may see a few fluctuations over the next few years as those scores get adjusted. And Steve can talk about that if you have any questions on that later. Also moved from exemplary to at-risk is Alma College. And moved from low-performing to at-risk, which is a movement upwards, was University of Detroit Mercy. They were in low-performing and so we now have them moving up, showing some upward trends in their MTTC scores, which is good. And moved from at-risk to low-performing, which is not good. We have Adrian College and Lake Superior State. And so they will be in corrective action. We will work with them to provide whatever technical assistance we can. And then all of that college was currently in their first year corrective action and they are now in low-performing for the second year. So those are the highlights from the document. You can see what the rankings are of all the institutions and the various categories which we've used over the last five, six years. It's now time for us to really take a look at these criteria, the categories that we're using to see, are there more, some that would be more active, I mean, more reflective of what would be a quality program?
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments?
My hand's up here.
John, I hear the chair.
Mike's wandered off. Go ahead, Nancy.
Oh, okay. Flora, I guess what jumped right out to me was the change in the status at Alma from not exemplary to satisfactory, but exemplary to at-risk. That seems rather catastrophic. Is there some organizational reason or something that you're going to tie to this?
Steve, do you want to address that? Look at the data that you have?
Yeah, there were three factors that differ from last year to this year with respect to Alma. For the past four report periods, they've had MTTC performance scores that have been 90% or better. So they've gotten full credit of 30 points out of the 70. This year, they dropped to 88% passing performance aggregate, which contributed to 25 points, so five points off from where they were last year. Also, in the area of high needs, which is a kind of a combination of the number of endorsements recommended for special education, math, the sciences, English language arts, including all the world language, bilingual and ESL. For the past four years, four reporting periods, Alma has had 35% or higher in those areas. So they've been receiving full credit. This year, their self-reported indication was only 19%. So they dropped below the 35%, which is required to get credit in this area. So they lost an additional five points there. Also, a smaller element is- Also, a smaller element is in the cohort number, in other words, the program repeater number or completer number, which is roughly getting some idea of how long it takes candidates to get through the program and how many do actually get through. Typically, they've been having numbers which have given them full credit. This year, their self-reported numbers dropped down a bit, so they lost two points in the cohort report. So, in total, then, from this year to last year, there was a 12-point swing in their performance score, which dropped them from 65 exemplary to, you know, 53 at-risk. So, it's a combination of those factors with respect to the preparation of the academic majors and minors as measured in the MTTC performance, as well as probably a shift in the number of high-needs individual or, you know, the high-needs endorsements being recommended.
I guess what I'm asking is, is this something that is, when people drop this dramatically, what kinds of support or help or conversations do you have? What happens next, I guess?
Well, the next step is that they'll be asked to prepare a corrective action plan, which will get at some of the elements you're talking about, Ms. Danhoff, where they're, look at what is contributing to this change? Has their population shifted at the institution? And then, they'll have to develop a plan of action to work towards correcting those things, as other institutions have been doing now for the past two or three years in Michigan already.
Yeah, the self-assessment will really help to kind of identify what, where those issues, the major issues are. And then, we will meet with them and discuss those and try to come up with some strategies for how they can address those issues and, again, start the improvement process.
All right. But what, you know, there's no place on here that says the, the numbers of students that are enrolled in their program. Has that dramatically dropped?
I didn't check that out. I can't really directly speak to that.
Okay. I just thought that might account for some of the percentage differences.
Yes, I think that's a reasonable thing, that there can be a shift in, you know, some programs being more prominent than others, and that's going to affect the, the way the scores fall out.
Sure. Well, thank you for your information.
Thank you. And then, Richard?
Nancy, that's the first question I was going to ask. That was, it obviously jumps out at all of us. But I was very glad to see that, that Mary Grove has moved to the satisfactory level. That's, that's reassuring and comforting, and, and that U of D Mercy is moving up slowly, but it's moving up in the right direction. It's, it's disturbing to see that, that Adrian has gone down and Lake Superior has gone down and to the low-performing level. And Olivet is still in the, those, that's, I assume we are working with those.
We have been working with those institutions, the Olivet. What has happened with Adrian and Lake Superior State is that their test scores, their MTTCs are down, so they're not getting any points because they're below the 80%. And the 80% is the minimum that you could get any points because that's what's required for Title II, is the 80% test pass rate. So, automatically, they lose at least, what, 20 to 25 points in that area? So...
Minimally 20 up to 30.
Yeah, possibly 30.
Then I had another question, Flora. The National Council on Teacher Quality has done reviews of colleges, of teacher preparation in Michigan, as well as across the country, and they come to different conclusions about some of our colleges of education. There was something in news to know recently, and it seems to me, if I remembered it correctly, that Lake Superior State was one of their better, they thought that was a good school. And we have it, you know, it's not doing so well. We have it in the second year of corrective action.
Yeah.
That's the one. And they, Western Michigan was given a very poor rating by them, and we say it's satisfactory. So, what do they do that's different from what we do, and should we be looking at what we do, or should they be looking at what they do?
Well, they only focused on one aspect of the teacher preparation program, and they only looked at elementary programs. And so, they looked at the student teaching and how they selected their student teaching and, they, they had, I think, a total of 16 criteria that they used, but they only really focused on five of the 16 for the 132, I think, teacher prep institutions that they looked at. And so, those were things that they were looking at with regard to student teaching. Then they made some kind of broad assumptions about that to the overall program, including secondary. So, where we focus on a number of criteria, they only looked at one. It was very unit-focused. So, and Steve did a really great analysis of that, so I don't know, Steve, if you have a couple of other highlights from that report that you want to mention?
Thank you, of course.
Steve's not silent on that.
We had asked the same.
Do you think that we should be including in our criteria anything about student teaching?
Well, one of the things that I think about when I think about what we're kind of comparing, the teacher performance elements with the, this teacher quality report, is really in the title itself, that this teacher quality was just student teaching at the undergraduate elementary, whereas the teacher performance thing that we've been talking about is a teacher performance institution. It's the preparation institution. It's the whole ball of wax, the College of Arts and Sciences, as well as schools of education. It's all part of what we're looking at. So, this teacher quality thing took a slice of the apple and looked only at that slice. The thing that we look at is really the whole apple, the whole picture of it. The thing that I think is, for me, quite, you know, remarkable, or at least helps me understand the differences and similarities a bit more, is if you look at the page three of, you know, our performance score elements, in the table, we have these categories of the MTTC, which is the test piece of it.
Yeah.
We have teacher exit surveys, we have supervisor surveys. Those are pieces that are related to student teaching, because when, when the candidate exits the student teaching experience, they have to survey or answer questions related to their teacher preparation process. Supervisors also answer some questions at the end of student teaching. And if you look at Lake State, you notice that at Lake State, they're high-performing. I mean, they've got full credit for the elements that are related to their student teaching and the pieces that are connected to their actual school of education. And the place that, as Flora mentioned, where they start, where they've gotten in trouble this year, is with the MTTC piece of it, which is a measure of the academic majors like history and social studies and English, minors in those same areas. So, this teacher quality report didn't look at the full, kind of, full stream of preparation. It only looked at the model and said it has model characteristics related to elementary student teaching. And it only looked at five specific elements. That it'd be at least 10 weeks, that it'd be local, that it'd be full-time, that was their first category, that the teacher preparation program, in other words, who's ever running the elementary, select the cooperating teachers. The cooperating teacher candidate must have at least three years, the, the classroom teacher must have at least three years of teaching experience. The cooperating teacher must have the capacity to have a positive impact on student learning. And then, finally, the cooperating teacher candidate must have the capacity to mentor an adult with skills and observation, providing feedback, holding professional conversations, and working collaboratively. You know, five very specific elements related to that student teaching event. So, within the context of understanding what they're looking at, it's meaningful, but to say it's a model with respect to all the teacher preparation aspects, that's where there's a difference.
And we do, we take a look at all of these surveys that come out, and I know you remember the Quality Counts survey, and part of that, one of those was on student teaching. We only required, I think at the time, eight weeks of student teaching, so we went back and we increased that to 12 weeks. You know, if you know what the criteria are, you know, if these are useful, this is, we need to take a look and see, okay, what aspects of these are useful, and then we can begin to incorporate those and say, okay, you need to be doing this in your program. You know, but at this point, we didn't, we didn't know what they were going to look at. None of the teacher preparation institutions knew what they were going to look at. So, if you don't know what you're being judged by, the standard you're being judged by, there's no way for you to get to it unless you just kind of accidentally are there.
But you think that the surveys of the, the teacher exit surveys really capture a lot of that?
Yes.
They, what they capture is whether the candidate felt they were prepared to be in the classroom and whether the supervisor felt that that candidate was prepared to be there.
Because the criteria that they use in what they're measuring, they seem sensible criteria for that purpose, and that's a, that's an important factor in teacher prep, it seems to me, the student teaching experience.
Oh, yes.
So, I just wanted to make sure that we had some of that in our criteria as well, and I guess we do.
Yeah, we do.
Richard and Elaine, excuse me. Thanks, Ken.
Just following up on Nancy Danforth's observation, I would find it helpful in the future if the, the size of the program, I mean, the number of students served by an Adrian is quite different from the number of, you know, MSU. So, I, I think that would be very helpful in the future. And the other one is the high-need content. I, I would really like to see which schools are focusing on one program, schools versus those that are, that are specializing perhaps in a higher, harder-to-fill programs like science and technology.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Just give some more detail on the high-need content, which, which schools have which programs?
Well, Michigan Tech at the bottom of page three is a perfect example of that, because they do math and science.
Yeah.
They don't have an elementary program. So, all of what they're producing is in the high-needs area, so that comes through in, in their particular score.
And Steve, I think what's being asked is...
Want some detailed data.
Is that clear in the current format?
No. It's, we can, we can add, like, an addendum piece that, that have all of these broken down into detail.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, that would be another table we could put in.
And maybe the numbers, we could bounce back tomorrow or something, at least the number part. The others, probably...
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to go to each institution and get their number and roll. We don't actually collect that number and roll, do we? That I know of.
No, but we can get at it with a reflection in terms of the number of MTTC tests that are taken. I could get you that information.
I can get you that.
In fact, we can actually, I mean, that would be something that, given a little bit of clicking, we could get to online, would actually be able to get some reflection of, you know, the programs that are...
I think if I'm asking that, there's some way we could do that.
Okay.
I mean, broke deans and gave them a month to do something, and some didn't respond at all within the month. I think if we ask for specific information, we can get it quickly. I don't understand the problem.
Oh, we can get enrollment data. You don't have to...
Follow-up question? This is, I'm going to just say this. This is my top priority for the year. And I think we have, in the department, and I'll start with my own responsibility, and it's dragged our feet on this more than some of our other initiatives. And right now, every year that goes by that we have another class of kids that leave teacher prep institutions, maybe not as prepared as we would like them to be, we are setting our schools and everyone else, and mostly our students, up for issues. And I'll give you an example. I mean, I'm an adjunct, and I don't model very well the way that we should teach young folks how to, in an iPad-oriented world of our students, to change our methods, to change the way that we think about a classroom, to change the way we think about learning, anytime, anyplace, anyway. So, if I had to, like, pick, I hate the word vision statement, but a vision for me, anyway, would be that, that all profs are going to model what this teaching would look like for their students, for their teacher prep students, so that they can have a better chance of being able to incorporate that in their teaching right out of the block. And I think we need to use all of our levers at the department and all of our leverage to try to ensure that that happens quickly. And this is one I'm taking personal responsibility for. I think we've dragged our feet. I was disappointed, I was going to say this for my report later, but I was disappointed that, you know, I think our, our request, my request personally, of these institutions to get us an understanding of the stuff related to their technology plans, and some, 11 didn't even meet the deadline. I don't understand that. And then, secondly, some of this, at least four of them, are of a quality that I've asked our staff to follow up with, those institutions, because they're not of the kind of quality that we, we saw in some of the other institutions that came in. And I, and I think what ends up happening is, before you know it, because we kind of unintentionally perceive ourselves to be K-12, we're focused on things like the discussion this morning on the EAA and taking over schools and who's under the gun. And I think we need to incorporate ourselves a lot more urgently and aggressively into this agenda with teacher prep institutions. And I, and I'll just say this, I mean, I don't mean this to be disrespectful, but I, I was alarmed that, I've never requested anything directly before, and to not get, I think, 11 of them within the timeline that we had to send a second letter is alarming to me. And this is stuff that was supposed to be thoughtfully done. Remember, this is because we decided if we were going to move to accreditation, then we were going to have our own, this was, we were going to have our own work related to, in this particular case, technology. And, but I would say, I wouldn't, I need to be clear about this. Other than missing the deadline, and maybe some of them, I don't want to read into this too much, but I'm wondering how much work had been done by some of the institutions prior to that request. But putting that aside for a minute, I think the major responsibility is with us. We haven't been clear about our expectations, so I don't think, I'm not finding fault with the teacher prep institutions just at this point. I think we need to be clear about what our, our expectations are and to help this whole system get better quickly in terms of our kids reaching high levels of achievement. And, and there's no more important part of this, in my way of looking at it, than 7,500 or so that are coming out each year from teacher prep institutions. You know, and every year, we, we shirk our responsibility, particularly here in the department, we, I think, postpone that. So, I got off a little bit on a tangent there, but it's, I was reacting really to, I don't know if we have that data. Well, I think we can get the data. I think we can ask for the data, worst case, and get it. Right?
Yeah.
May I follow through just with a detail here? The program completion rate, I mean, presumably, you've got the number of students who started and the number who didn't, and so, is that a self-reported percentage, or do we get those raw numbers?
It's self-reported. They report them to us.
Okay, okay.
And it's a, that's a six-year...
A six-year cohort.
Cohort.
Okay, because I'm, I'm interested in the, some of the raw numbers as, as well as the percentage. So, that's, that's just what I'm saying there. And the same thing with high-need content. I'd be interested in which are the, which content areas or program areas are offered, and just to make this report more, more meaningful to me personally. Thank you.
Elaine, please.
I have a, a couple of comments that are completely unrelated, but the first one is that I had the privilege of serving on the Professional Standards Commission for Teachers for a couple of years. And one of the things that, you know, as you look at the nuances of why TPIs have trouble, one of the problems, of course, is that they may have a legacy student population, or they may be an institution that attracts a certain kind of student, and their ed school is there to try and service that student who wants to come to their institution. So, they may be struggling because that, that population doesn't seem to want to have a high-need profession in the future. But I think that the thing to point out in our report is that, that a lot of these institutions lost, they lost 10 points right off the bat in diversity and, what's the other category? Sorry about this. I've lost the report, Flora.
Oh.
Diversity and high-needs.
High-needs.
Yeah. And there are, is at least one institution in the top-ranking institutions that it got 0% for diversity. So, it can be, it can be, like, zero points for diversity, so it can be done. But if you're going to, if you have to try and pick where you want to satisfy things, then you've got to have a stellar program. You've got to have graduates who come out the shooting block who are ready to do anything. So, that's hard, and I recognize it, but that's, that's what the feds require, and that's where we have to go. The second thing is, sort of unrelated, but it does touch greatly on what Mike was just talking about, which is that I'm, I'm fresh from a National Assessment and Governing Board meeting. And one of the things that was cited was the Council of Chief State School Officers Assessment Conference, at which they did a focus group. About a quarter of the comments that came out on what could be different in schools had to do with teachers who cannot do classroom assessment that informs instruction. And it's a huge problem across the country. It certainly, every, every place I go when I talk to math teachers, for instance, I've met a handful of teachers who are capable of taking data on a quiz and then fixing the kid's instruction without outside help. So, we know that it's an... So, we know that it's an issue nationally, we know that it's an issue in the state, and the other unsettling comment that was made was that we had a dual presentation by both PARC and the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And there's $18 million right now for implementation of teaching classroom teachers when the assessments come out. That's all the money that's been allocated to the partnerships to train classroom teachers in how to use these results. And both consortia have a way to get information back to the classroom on a limited basis, not limited basis for the children, but, you know, not, not a full-blown assessment. Every child will get, every teacher will have a snapshot of their kids if they can figure out how to use it. We don't know how to use it. We don't have the money to train the teachers in the classrooms how to use it, and the consortia don't have the money to train. We have to start looking at what the TPIs are doing, because in this case, there's about 103,000 teachers in Michigan, only about 2,000 are being hired, and they produced, I think we had 8,000 teachers take the provisional, pass the provisional exam last year, so the provisional licensing exam. So, it's possible that we could, if we, if we turned on this and asked the TPIs to start doing it now, have 6,000 more teachers out of that 103,000 who know how to do it, who don't have to be trained at extra cost by their schools, by their districts, and by the state. And we've just got to start taking a look at that, because it's irresponsible of us as a policymaking board to not do it. The information's out there, we know the need is there, and the, and the way to do it exists, and it's being taught in some ed schools. So, that's my statement for the moment, sorry.
I think almost the way we're doing this with K-12, I'm sure there are models of excellence in each of the TPI institutions that could be shared in a way that, you know, the very thing you just mentioned, it's probably going on in X number of them in a way that we'd all be proud of and they'd be proud of. It may not be going on in all of them, and if not, how do we more quickly get each other up to speed on that?
And what do we ask them to do? Because that's the problem. I'm not sure we're asking for it.
That's exactly, I mean, that's the part I think I have to take on more than anyone is being not, you know, not responsible enough the last few years, is I think this is something that's often the right question asked. I mean, I found that from the letter. I think we learned a lot from one question asked. And I'll have more another time. Ken?
I just want to clarify something. The MTTC covers both pedagogy and content, right?
It covers content.
Content, really?
It's the content area type.
Content? Do we give any emphasis at all to the teaching of classroom management? Or how to...
Not, not through the MTTC.
Pardon me?
Not, not through the MTTC.
That occurs with the observation of the student teaching component, and that's how they get that feedback on whether or not the teacher...
You shouldn't, you shouldn't put some, put a category or something on how do you run a classroom?
Well, one of the things we have talked about as we start to look at, as teachers go through the teacher prep, do, and some of the institutions already do this, that you take the MTT, MTTC before you go into student teaching?
You, right now, the law requires you to pass the basic skills test before student teaching.
And so, some of the question is, do you actually do that as an entry into the program, rather than before you go into student teaching? So, you're already starting to get, changing maybe the nature of the student that's in the program. So, and I don't know if that's the answer, but is, do we encourage more screening of students before they get into the program? Once they get into the program, do they have to have another point, maybe halfway through, before they go into student teaching, to make sure that they've got another kind of assessment? And then, before the institution recommends them to the department for certification, do we think about some kind of a performance assessment system that they could actually use, so that they don't even recommend them to the department for certification unless they've been able to pass a performance-based system? The challenge, of course, is those are very expensive to develop and very expensive to deliver, but if we really want to talk about upping the ante about the quality of the teachers that we're getting, that may be something we've got to fight for.
It's something, I know that new teachers really have struggled with that, I think. Frequently, they, they might know their content very well, but they, especially if they're in schools with hard-to-teach students. And they, that should be part of the whole program. How do you do that?
Yeah. And those placements.
It's very effective in many cases, from what I've observed, for young, the young teachers.
Thank you, Ken. Mary Ann?
Older teachers, for that matter.
We're talking about some pretty stringent measures here for what these schools have to, to go through to reach a good assessment for their students. What, when we start doing the alternate route to teaching, are those organizations that will be graduating students, will they have to go through any of this as well?
We will have to develop an accountability system for that, and one of the things that probably wouldn't be a factor would be the MTTC, because they have to pass the MTTC before they're even eligible to get into an alternate route program. So, that would drop out. So, we'd have to look at some other things, probably things more closely related to maybe the exit surveys, and certainly the assessment of the supervisors. Because I think that the practical part of it is where you're going to get most of your data about those students. In terms of the high-need content, we could look at that. So, I don't know exactly what those factors will be now. We will have to develop that.
It seems like it would be the fair thing to do.
Yeah. Almost definitely.
Just a point of clarification on the supervisor surveys. Is that the supervisor from the TPI institution, or is that the classroom instructor?
It's the TPI.
Need to do classroom.
So, is there a factor at all in here, a feedback mechanism for the classroom supervising teacher?
Not, not in this.
It's not reflected in this, but it, is it, could it be a part of, it's not reflective here, in the supervisor survey?
It could be. Yes.
But we don't know that from this point. There's not a, there's not a separate piece for the classroom supervising teacher, but there could be some reflective information in the, the TPI supervisor.
Right. Right now, the TPI supervisor consults very closely with that classroom supervisor, so they're getting feedback from them that way. So, it's an indirect representation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great presentation. Appreciate your time on this. And I think we do have, item D is, committee of the whole agenda, and is there any discussion regarding criteria for the grant program? Any questions? Okay, we're good, and it might be, since we're one minute to...
I have one question that I want to raise on this. As a former grant shark, and of course, Dan isn't here, but one of the things that caught my eye is that if a school is no longer, if a school is closed or is no longer eligible for funding, it appears that the money stays with the district, stays with the ISD, as opposed to reverts back to the pool of funding for the, for the department. And I don't have trouble with that, but I would like to chat that one through at some point, because there's still little funding available, and you have such high needs that if a district doesn't have as dire straits for its other schools as for that one, it seems to me that we would be in a better position to make sure that the money was given to somebody who really needed it and could use it to move forward.
Any quick thoughts, Lana?
Just that what we've discovered along, through the years when we've been doing this, is that those occurrences are rare.
Yes.
And the ability to pull that money back and then get it out to someplace else where it can be used when it's halfway through the year or something like that is more problematic. And we can divert those dollars to a needy school already identified, and we read all that through. And so, it's just, they'll have a few more dollars to use somewhere else, and it's not large amounts that come up, just to make sure we're covered.
Well, as we get into second and third years of remediation, it could be more money. And with, with the new executive systems authority, EA, we might have changing dynamics on that. So, I would like to revisit it at some point, some future year, for thinking.
Great. Thank you. Why don't we adjourn till one-ish, or...
One-ish.
Okay. One-ish. And any guests that aren't aware, on the UP level, or sometimes on a...